Okay, so um once we, once we realize whatever the questions are, just just stop me and we'll uh we'll go through them. In the meantime, I'm gonna start working through section two point two.
Can you number fifteen?
Uh from what, what section?
Uh two point two.
Two point two, let's do it.
Fifteen is sixteen.
Okay. Just type, go ahead, go ahead and type it in the chat too, cause I'll bounce around from there and back. Uh let's see. So let's hop over here. Nope, not that one. Let me check one more time like this. Yeah, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, let's do it. Right. Oh, uh some things I noticed also with my last class. So we were checking, I checked the calendar. This is week ten. Uh we only have about like four weeks left, right? We're gonna be done before Thanksgiving. And the end of October is rapidly approaching. So this is week ten. Week twelve is gonna be exam three over two, one, two, two and two, three. Then we have a couple of more sections after that and then the final. So I say that to say, um most people should be in one of three boats. Either you're completely caught up and you're good to go. Uh if you're behind on Pearson, now is a good time to get caught up. Uh this is a great weekend. Also, the closer we get to the final exam, the more unreliable Pearson's gonna become because everybody across the, whatever their scope is, usually gets on at the same time because you know, midterms and finals are pretty much the same across the board. So what that means is that Pearson's gonna slow down and closer we get to the uh final exam. And you don't wanna be like at the last minute trying to get that stuff in on Pearson, cause it's gonna, it's gonna shut down. It's gonna, they're gonna, it's just gonna be bad. That's usually how Pearson goes. So like now is a good time to get caught up. Uh we get unlimited attempts at everything. If you wanna A on any assignment, you could still get it. Uh you would just have to get a perfect score because of the ten percent late penalty. Um yeah.
I had a question.
Uh go ahead.
Uh I need a, I need a t- a math tutor.
Have you con- have you contacted the, the, the division of uh science and mathematics?
Uh no, sir, I have not.
Like uh send me an email requesting a tutor. I forward it to the, the, the division chair for mathematics and he'll know, they'll know exactly. But you can like go ahead and call the office too. Um call them.
Is there a number?
You would have to go to the Morehouse website. Like I don't know it off the top of my head. I'd, you'd have to go to the Morehouse website and look it up. But send me an email, uh and just remind me towards the end of class. I'll look for it before we get off and I'll forward it to the where it needs to go. And that way I'll get the parties involved. And they're pretty good about responding. They're much better about responding than I am. I know, you know. Uh but yeah, just be aware, we get unlimited attempts at all assignments. Uh all assignments are set to take your highest score. Uh also, uh if you have any kind of like extinguating circum- circumstance regarding access to Pearson, just let me know if we can work something out. Um but now is the time to make a move, right? Okay? Uh some of your sources for support, uh you know, there's Pearson itself. And then you have the tutor, you have your classmates, you have tutors and myself. So between those four sources, you know, hopefully we can get the job done. So let's uh let's start with uh question number fourteen. There was a request for fourteen, so we'll start there. Okay, it says determine the zeros and their multiplicities. Okay. Uh let me see, two numbers. So it's almost completely factored for us. Can we find two numbers that multiply to give us negative two and add to give us three? No, right? So we need to do quadratic formula there. Let me do this. Let me go paper like this. Okay, let me take some notes. So this comes from section two point two. Nope, you don't have thing. Hang on, I gotta read with you. This comes from section two point two, polynomial functions, poly- nominal functions. Uh this is question number fourteen. Two point two, question number thirty-three from the end of that section. Uh and basically I'm just factoring this x squared. Here, let me just beat that right, write the whole thing. So my F of X equals, we got this X to the four times X squared plus three X minus two. It's partially factored, but it's not fully factored. Let's hop over here and let's do that same thing for you guys. Let me see. Okay, see that's, okay, that looks good. Okay, that's all I think you can say. Okay, um so I tried to factor the, the quadratic, but that does not factor. So I'm gonna use the quadratic formula, right? Quadratic formula is, come on. X equals, let me see. The negative boy couldn't decide to go to the rat up a house because he was square, so he missed out four awesome chicks. And it was all over by two AM, right? One of my former Morehouse tutors, that's how he remembers it. I was like, that's awesome. So it was instantly ingrained in my, in my mind, so. I think he did it twice and then I, I, I took it from there. Um so if we're doing quadratic formula on that part, the negative B said it's gonna be negative three, plus or minus the square, that's gonna be nine minus four. Our A is one and our C is negative two, okay? All over two. Alright, if we keep going, negative three, plus or minus, uh four times two is eight, nine plus eight is seventeen, so it's gonna be the square root of seventeen over two. So now we're ready. Let me hop back over here and make sure that this is going properly, looks good. Okay. So now, now we have all our zeros. So the first zero comes from X to the four, that tells us that zero is zero. The zero is zero. And then the other two, we have this uh, we do like a, we do a space and then division. So the top, we got negative three minus the square root of seventeen over, over two and then. Okay, let's go ahead and do this now. There, it looks good. Put that back and let it me. I'll check the chat in just a moment. I'm gonna go ahead and finish up this question or maybe this request. Come on. Then I'm just gonna copy this and comma, and I'm gonna paste. And instead of minus, this is gonna be a plus. Okay, it goes with the zero, looks good. The multiplicity farthest left, the farthest left is gonna be the one with the minus. That, that's gonna have a exponent of one, so the multiplicity is gonna be one. The, the middle one is gonna be this X to the four, the multiplicity there is four. And then the last one is also one. Okay, so then uh the one that's, this one to the far left, because it has an odd multiplicity, that means it's gonna cross the X axis. The middle one, because I have an even, because it has an even multiplicity, it's gonna bounce or touch. It's gonna touch and turn around. It's gonna bounce off the X. Okay, uh and then the, the last one just crosses because it has an odd multiplicity. Let's go ahead and do fifteen. Intermediate value theorem. Um so they really want us to break up, to uh break this interval up into ten equal parts, so then we would need to test, you know, uh I'm just gonna do a shortcut and use my calculator. Uh let's do it here. Let's go like this. That looks good. Uh I'll check the chat in just a moment and reload or refresh. Let's hop over here. Let me show it here. Hang on, hang on, I'm coming. Oh shoot, I keep forgetting to write that down. Uh so this is number fifteen. And then number fifteen, we have, this is uh two, two, thirty-five. We have this P of X equals, we got two X to the four, three X cubed, ten, okay? Uh let's see. Two X, oh, the zeros, alright. So I'm just gonna use my graphic calculator. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go to my Y equals and I'm gonna type in the polynomial, two X to the power of four, minus three X to the power of three, minus ten, okay? Hmm, I'm gonna go, I'm just gonna go straight to the graph. It says between two and three, so we can see that it crosses between two and three. So then above trace, it says calculate. I'm gonna hit second trace so I can get to the calculate and, and right there, number two, it says zero, I'm gonna hit two. So then it acts for a left bound. So my left bound, right there, that's to the left of the zero. This goes to the right, so that's to the right of the zero. And then they wanna guess. They, you wanna get as close to zero as you can. They enter, the decimal that it gives me, two point oh seven. That's after rounding to two decimal places, two point oh seven, alright? Two point oh seven, two point oh seven. There are other ways, um yeah, I'm gonna go with this one for now, just for the sake of time. If you need to see another one, just let me know, hang on. Uh oh, this, oh, let me see. Intermittent, this is a repeat. Uh let me, let me check the chat now. Yeah, that, that one's kind of a repeat. Uh let's see, I didn't see your steps for solving that. Which, which one, Mr. Taylor? Um five, ten, what time is it? That's more than likely it was fifteen. Move too fast, I didn't get any of that for number fourteen. Let's go back to number fourteen. Do you guys hear me? Okay, so here's the one that we did. Um for, for these two answers, I used the quadratic formula, right? Quadr- quadratic formula. Let's go like this. If he wasn't this black. I'm glad he showed up, cause if he didn't. Uh let's do like this, I'm not showing my sensitive stuff. Let's go like this, it should be this one. And then, oop, put it back, put you back. Actually, we're done. I'm gonna let Mr. McCullough get in. Okay, yeah, so again, for these results, uh they just, that was, that came directly from the quadratic formula on this trinomial here, right? And then the multiplicity, so for instance, this one in the middle, this is our leftmost zero, right? If we, if we find this decimal, this one's gonna be the furthest one to the left. Uh let me see. Fifteen, I think it's on the calculator, okay? So um if we wrote this as a factor, this would be X minus this thing, but the exponent will be a one, so that's where this came from. It's similar to like this exponent here. Like because this is a square, this factors into two, two terms, but the, the binomial's gonna have a degree of one. This one has a, a multiplicity of four, so that's where that four came from. And this one was similar, right? This one had a multiplicity of one as well. When a zero has an odd multiplicity, it crosses. When it has an even multiplicity, it bounce, it bounces or touches, alright? So then if we look at number fifteen, yeah, okay, so all I did for fifteen, I uh went to Y equals and typed that in. Let me see if I can hop over there. So what I did, in the upper left-hand corner, I went to Y equals, I just typed that in and then I hit graph and it just graphed it for me. And then to find the zero is right here, where it says calculate, so I hit second trace to activate calculate.
Hell no.
Right? Were you doing it like one by one? I don't know. I don't know if he responded to me or not, but. Yeah, it's right here. So if you hit second calculate, if you have this kind of calculator, now if you don't have this kind of calculator, you have to find another way. There are other techniques. This was just the fastest one. So I hit second calculate. And then number two was a zero. So then it says the left bound, so I went left of the zero. I just hit enter. I went to the right of the zero and I hit enter. And then I, I get, they wanna guess, so you wanna get as close to the zero as you can and then it'll calculate the zero for you. Two point oh seven, that's where that came from. Okay, hopefully, hopefully that sunk in. That looks good. Let me check the chat one more time, see if there are any other requests before I just start walking them off. Okay. Alright, uh let me look at eighteen, I think eighteen. Let me take eighteen really quick here. Cause I think we said sixteen was a repeat. Let's do eighteen. It's similar to seventeen, I think. Let's see, come on. Okay, so number eighteen. It says for this function, answer the following. Describe the end behavior. Okay, end graph behavior. Uh actually, before I do eighteen, I'm gonna do seventeen. They're similar, but I think seventeen is a better primer um for this. Let me see. Whoops, let's go back. Whoops, that's not how you go back. Come on. Come on. Let's do this. Seventeen. Now it doesn't load. Okay, that's cool. Hmm, I need to reload it. Let's go here. Alright, let's just reload it. Here, let's just hit preview. We're gonna do full screen. And let's go to number seventeen. Okay, so number seventeen, let's do this one first. It says describe the end graph behavior. For the end graph behavior, we use a leading co- the leading, we're gonna use the leading term test, right? So the leading coefficient, because it's positive, that tells us it goes up to the right. Because the degree of the polynomial is even, that means the other side does the exact same. So it should go up to the left and up to the right. So rises, rises to the left and right, so it should be B. Alright, again, let's run through that one more time. Because the leading coefficient is positive, it goes up to the right, alright? Because the degree of the polynomial is even, the other side does the exact same. So even means exact same, right? So that means it goes up to the left as well. The only one that does that is B. We're gonna go with that one. Hit okay. Then sketch the graph. So uh it can't be, it can't be A, cause that's opening the wrong way. It said, we said up to the right and up to the left. So these all do that, so we need to find something else. Hmm, okay, we got one of the zeros is the origin. So it can't be D, because look, you, we can factor out an X to the four from all of these, right? We could probably factor it further. So let me see, if we factor out X to the four, we're gonna have X squared plus nine X plus twenty. Are there two numbers that multiply to give us twenty and add to give us nine? Five and four, right? So then the zeros will be negative five and negative four. Looks like, I'm gonna with B, right? Let's, let's expand it. If that's ten, two, four, six, eight, ten, so two, four, here's negative four, negative five and zero. Alright, so basically we factored it, found the zeros and the zeros we got were negative five, negative four and zero. Okay, I just did it audibly, but that was the concept. I'm gonna check the answer. Awesome, so, okay. So that was, so then the request was really for number eighteen, so hopefully that was a decent primer. So then the end behavior. Now for this one, we need to expand it, right? So let's distribute that seven X squared. We're gonna get negative seven X cubed, right, for the leading term. So because the leading coefficient is negative, that means it's gonna fall to the right. So it has to be, has to be either B or D, right, fall to the right. And then because the degree of the polynomial is gonna be odd, alright, once you expand it, you'll see that the degree is gonna be three, which is odd. So that means the other side does the opposite. So if it falls to the right, it's gonna rise to the left. Only when it falls to the right and rises to the left is B. That's the leading term test. Uh be aware. Be aware, um I, I would imagine that most people would know this, but as we go through the home, as we go through these questions, if anything is not clear, they, they generally have an explanation attached to them. View an example, it's the exact same question with different numbers and it's worked the exact same way. This one has a video, ask my instructor. I definitely have brothers using it, uh and I get to them as soon as I can. And there's the E textbook, right? These are very powerful tools. I don't really use to help me solve this as much, but yeah. I just, those are really, really powerful. They'll get you, they'll get you there. Okay, let's go with this. Check the answer. Let's see if we can just click here. So then to graph it, we said the zeros, oh, this one's already factored for us, right? So we don't, we can actually use, use this factor form. One of the zeros is zero, the other one is negative one, right? Zero and negative one. So I'm gonna click here. It's a degree three polynomial, so that's gonna make this kind of shape. Uh one of the zeros was zero. Another zero was negative one, so I'm gonna click here for negative one. And then I'm gonna just uh choose a couple of values. For instance, let's say when X is one, right? When X is positive one, one plus one is two. Two times seven is a negative fourteen. So when X is one, Y is negative fourteen, way down here, one negative fourteen, okay? And then let's get another point. Let's do when X is negative two. When X is negative two, thank you. When X is negative two, this is gonna be negative one, that's gonna be a positive four. Uh negative twenty-eight, so positive twenty-eight. So when X is negative two, well, it goes off the chart, so we can't do that one. Uh let's see, we did one, I guess we have, can we do a half? Uh yeah, let's do. Let's do uh the negative one half, right? So if we do a negative one half, this is gonna be one half, this is gonna be one fourth. Seven over four times a half. Let me see, a negative seven over four times a half. Negative seven over four times a half is a negative seven over eight. We need to be able to type that in. Negative seven eights. So a negative one half, okay, so I'm gonna click here and see if it lets me type it. Yeah, I need to type. Delete or remove with arrows by dragging, can we type to edit? Hmm, I was trying to do integers. Okay, that point's a little bit difficult to get to. Let's see. What does this do? That's not just drawing anything. Hmm, okay, let's see if we can find another point. We did one, I think two goes off the chart. We did zero. Do we do negative two? I think we did negative two already. Let's see what this says in the chat. Let's go over here. Hang on, I always do that. It does, it should. Now, if you're working a quiz or an exam, it's not gonna happen, but the homeworks should happen. Uh let me see, I'm just trying to find one more point. We need one more point on this graph. Let me see, I think we did negative one. Uh I think, did we do negative two already? That was negative one for, so if we do negative two, this is negative one, that's a four, that's a negative twenty-eight. Negative one, negative twenty, it was positive twenty-eight, so two, oh, but that goes off the chart, right? Hmm, we need to be able to type the point. That's the trouble. The one and the zero are fine. When we do a half, it's supposed to be seven eights. Maybe, maybe I didn't do that right. Let me check it again. If I do a negative one half, that's a one half, that's a one fourth, that's a negative seven over four. Negative seven over eight. Let me see something, let me click here. Can I get rid of this? How do I get rid of this? Yeah, it's supposed to be able to let you type it in. Um that's what I'm looking for, hang on. Cause like we were able to do it earlier. Let me just focus that up. Where'd it go? Alright, I'm gonna have to try again. Hit preview. It's the time, yeah, we're okay. That was number seventeen, eighteen. Let me see, it falls. Let's see if it. Let's see if it. Okay, let's see if it's here. Yeah, here it is. Try this again. Like this, like this, okay? Let me check one other thing. I'm gonna go to OBS, that looks okay. Alright, this is where we are. Okay, so we said it falls to the right. Oh, yeah, and it's odd, so that it rises to the left. Falls, falls to the right. Here it is. Falls to the right and rises to the left, this one. Okay, now let's try this again. Let me see this. Hmm, click the graph, follow the instructions. Okay, so that's just like showing that. So now from here, four point two, for instance, when X is zero, it goes to the origin, so Y is zero. When X is one, that's a two, that's a negative fourteen, so one negative fourteen. It's here. Uh we did zero, I think. Let's do two really quickly. When X is two, that's three, that's a four. That's twenty-eight times three. It's really, really negative, so there's nothing there. Let's do when X is negative one, that's a zero. That is negative one, that's a zero, okay? We need one more. Maybe we just missed one last time. Um negative two, did it go off the chart? Cause if we do negative two, that gives us negative one, that's a four, that's a negative twenty-eight, positive twenty-eight. Yeah, it goes off the chart. Okay, let's try three halves. That's gonna be, let me see, one point five, so that's a two point five. Uh that's not gonna be clean. How do we get that last point? See, it needs to be something like, essentially something like this. And then the half, I know that's not right, but, and it's probably not gonna give us credit. And then it won't let me type it in, that's what I need to do. Let me see something. I mean, I could change the setting. Let's just see. It shouldn't work though. Uh use the end behavior, X intercept from Y and the symmetry. There's no symmetry. Let me uh, I'm gonna just force the answer and see what it does. Maybe we're missing something. The right answer. One, two. Maybe we were missing something. That's a half. Two, let's just try it again. I'm gonna do a similar one. Maybe, maybe we might calculate something right. Okay, the leading coefficient is negative, it falls to the right, okay? And then its opposite, it rises to the left, so let's go with that. Okay, and then let's try this one again. But again, it's, it's supposed to let us type. Uh let's see, so we got when X is zero, Y is zero, it's this one. X is zero, Y is zero. Negative one, we get a zero, so there's that one. Hmm, when we do one, that's a two. Negative four, right? That's like this negative four. Uh what about? Uh, what about two, we do two, that's a three, that's four times two is eight. Negative twenty-four, that goes off the chart. Is this supposed to be here, if we do a negative one half, that's a half, that's a fourth, that's a negative one half, there's a negative one-fourth. See, we can't get there. Okay, yeah, it's so strange, cause I was able to do it earlier, now it's not letting me do it. Uh, let me try another one, and that goes off too. I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna worry about it, but yeah. So if you experience something like that on an exam, or if you know you got something right, uh, we can, I can look at it, and we can uh make sure to get credit for it. Cause I know we can't, it's not letting us get in there. So, I don't wanna keep going, let me see how far, how far we. Yeah, that's not fair, that's totally not fair, we can't get in there. Okay, anyway. Alright, uh, that kinda ate up a lot of our time. Okay, anyway, let me see if there's, I don't think there have been any requests, cause I've been monitoring the chat. Let's kinda start from the top, we can get through a lot of these. The degree, okay, so the degree is not too bad, the degree is just for five. The leading term is two X to the fifth. The leading coefficient is two. And the constant term is negative sixteen. Okay, so we need to distribute this, the one-seventh, the degree is gonna be four in this case. Leading term is gonna be two sevenths X to the fourth, so two, two over seven, oops, times X to the power of four. Leading coefficient is gonna be two over seven. The degree is five. The leading term is two pi X to the fifth, two pi X to the power of five. The leading coefficient is two pi, two pi. Uh, it's not a polynomial because of the absolute value, the presence of the absolute values, so C. That's who vibes gonna create, uh, like a sharp corner or edge or something like that, and it can't, polynomial graphs can't have that. Um, this is not a polynomial, because the exponents have to be non-negative integer exponent. If we say X squared divided by X to the fourth, it's gonna give us X to the negative two, and you can't have negative exponents for polynomial. This is not a polynomial because of that uh fourth root, um again, that's not gonna be a non-negative integer, that's a, that's a irrational exponent. So because of that, that fourth root. No, this is not the graph of a polynomial, because it's a break or a gap. Uh, same reason here, there's a break or a gap. It's not continuous, right? The graph is not continuous, so it's not a polynomial. The Y intercept is gonna be negative two in this case, again, Y intercept, we let X be zero. Hmm, the leading, leading coefficient is negative, so that means it goes down to the right, so it has to be either C or D. And then the degree is even, which is eight, the degree is eight, which is even, so the other side is the exact same, so then it should be C. Leading coefficient is positive, so it goes up to the right, so it has to be either A or B. And the degree is even, they go in the same direction, the Y intercept is seven. So that was nowhere near seven, so this should be the graph. Master polynomial function with the graph, uh, the Y intercept is five. Leading coefficient is positive, so that means it goes up to the right, so it has to be either B or D. And then the degree of the polynomial is odd, which means the other side does the opposite, so it has to be B. The zeros, so fortunately, this is already factored for us, so the zeros are gonna be nine and negative six. So we're gonna say nine and negative six. The multiplicity of nine, so the, the exponent on that binomial is a one, so the multiplicity is one, that means it's gonna cross the X axis. The multiplicity on the negative six is two, so it's gonna bounce off the X axis. So a nine is gonna cross the X axis. And then negative six is gonna bounce off the X axis. Let me see, again, fortunately, this is already factored, so the zeros are gonna be two, um, yeah, two and negative three. Uh, multiplicity of two, right here, the, is a three, the multiplicity is three. Uh, the multiplicity, yeah, the multiplicity of negative three is two, cause of the exponent, so that's the two. If the X intercept is two, it's gonna cross, cause the multiplicity is odd. And then we're gonna bounce, cause the multiplicity is, yep, that's what I want. Maximum number of turning points, right? So if we were to expand this out, this would be a degree five polynomial, so that means we have at most four turning points, N minus one turning point. Okay, uh, I'm gonna stop there, um if there are other requests, we can kinda go, we, as, we still have time, if you wanna go over more, if there aren't any questions, I'll let everybody go.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Um, but it's not about this, it's about one point six.
Okay. You know which question from one point six?
Yes, sir. Um, alright, so about the composite function. I've been having trouble with this.
Like which one in particular?
Which one in particular?
So, uh, composite function, all it is A composite function is like, it just means the second function inside the first function, right?
Right, 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 so, alright, so, hi, F of X, right? It's, it's four X, or
Wait, wait, do you know which question that came from?
Nah, I, I really don't, I was just trying to work in example. But, you know what I'm saying, like work in example.
Yeah, like a specific question is best, because like, when we just do it off the cuff, we can make mistakes, and then we might like waste time on something that's not solvable. Right, you know what I mean? I don't know if any of these like look what, look like what you're
Yeah, it was a question just like that, go back.
Number six?
Yes, sir, no, go back one more, one more, wow.
But this one, this one isn't composition, this one is like
No, no, not that, not that, go forward.
Forward, okay.
I think it, it, it had to be, um
Wait, just tell me when to stop.
You just had it, you had it with, where, uh, it was like four A squared, and then T F of X is X to the X cubed.
Okay, let me see.
So, I think it was at the beginning or something like that.
Let's start there, let's go here. Like this one?
No, sorry, he had seven parts.
Seven parts.
I think, oh, this one right here, yeah, that one right there.
Number five?
No, not, go back one.
So So this
My head, four A squared minus three X plus two. So, four A squared minus three X.
So when you're going through the homework, um, the best thing is just right here, click on the X my instructor, and it'll send me a screenshot. And we'll have it on file, and I'll, I'll respond as soon as I can. Uh, with this one, um do you wanna work this one or your numbers?
Uh, my number, please.
Alright, let's see, so this is number four. This comes from section one point six, uh, combining functions, combining functions. And composite, that's not a C. Uh, this is number what, four, it comes from section one-six, number seven. We have this F of, F plus G of X, right?
Right, cause four A squared
Hang on, hang on, F minus
Three X.
Hang on, hang on. F, F times G of X, and then F divided by G of X, okay? And then, now what's your F of X?
F squared, F? Uh, I mean, four A squared minus three X plus two. G of X is, is Q.
X cubed, okay, but the other instructions were the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's hop over here, like this, okay? So, basically it's saying add, subtract, multiply, and divide these two functions, uh, with, with these, right? So for instance, if we do, if we do F plus G of X, all it just means is just say F of X plus G of X. Just add the two functions together. Again, this means, uh, F of X plus G of X. Again, we're not, we're not distributing an X here, that's a common error that's, that students make, right? That's not what's going on. All we're, all is, all this says, all this means is just say this function plus this function, just, just add the two functions together. Alright, so I know that's a common one that, that catches people sometimes. So then F of X is gonna be this, four X squared minus three X plus two. Plus, G of X is X cubed, uh, that should be it for that one, maybe put it in descending power order, but that will be the first one.
Okay, so you're not really like multiplying by X cubed, I mean, uh, adding by X cubed.
Right, right, what you said sounds correct, right? The next one, let's do the next one, we're gonna do F minus G of X. Again, what does this mean? This just means F of X minus G of X. Alright, so just subtract the two functions, uh, one from the other. So then that's gonna be four X squared minus three X plus two, minus, in this case, G of X is just X to the third. There are unlike terms, nothing to distribute, so that should be it there.
So, would the domain be, um, negative infinity to positive infinity for both?
Okay, yeah, so for this, for the domain, the domain of this polynomial is all reals, the domain of this one is all reals. So then for addition, subtraction, and multiplication, all reals intersect all reals. For those first three, the domain is just gonna be all reals. Alright, but for F divided by G, the only stipulation that we have is that we cannot divide by zero. So we gotta throw out any X that makes this guy zero, cause we cannot divide by zero. So instead of being all reals, it's gonna be everything except X equals zero in this case. Does that make sense? Because again, we can, we cannot divide by zero, so we have to throw that one out. It's a little intense, you know, we just have to keep pushing. Let's connect with the tutors, um
Are you not doing a, a multiplication?
We can do, yeah, yeah, so multiplication, okay? So if we're gonna do multiplication, F times, right, so it's F, uh-uh, that's not the right one. F times G of X, again, this just means F of X times G of X, right? F of X is this guy, four X squared minus three X plus two. G of X is X cubed, right? So in this case, we could either leave it like that, they might want us to distribute that X cubed. Multiplication over addition, right? At, at, at worst, this would be the result. Uh, X square, so if we say X square times X cubed, what do we do with those exponents?
You add them.
We add them, right, so that's gonna be X to the fifth. Minus three X, the next one is four, and the final one is two X to the third. And that domain is just gonna be all reals as well, because there's no restrictions.
Can we simplify that even more or no?
No. Either, either they want the answer like this, or they want the answer like the green bar, it's gonna be one of those two answers. And then division, uh I mean, yes. So if we say F, nope. F divided by G of X. This means F of X divided by G of X. F of X in this case was four X squared minus three X plus two. And G of X is, well, X cubed. They might want the answer like this, or you could distribute the X cubed, and we'll get, maybe not. I would say view an example just to see how they want that answer. But then again, we have to notice that X cannot be equal to zero, because if X were zero, it would make zero in the denominator. So we had to throw that number out. That's the only additional thing, for division.
Okay, okay. And, and so that domain, there'd be like, um there'd be like negative infinity to zero, union uh, zero to positive infinity?
Yes, and the zeros will get parentheses, uh, because we don't include the zeros, alright? So, what you said was correct, yeah. Uh, this is a good time if you have more questions, I'm ready to go.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Uh, can you go over, um, either, I think it's fifteen or sixteen again, the one that you use the calculator?
Okay, let's go with this.
Cause I'm doing it, but it's like I'll get the wrong answer, and it would just be like
Use a lot, two point one or one point six?
Um, two point two.
Two point two, let's preview. What's going on here? Ooh, that sounds like fun. I know, I know. Okay, you said, I think it's like, hang on, let's do like this, like this, like this. You said like fifteen or sixteen, I think it was sixteen? Yeah, so I just used the calculator, right, so on the Y equals, I typed this in, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I know how to do that, but it's when I get the line, so after I press trace.
No, not trace, well, well, yeah, yeah, okay, so, let me run up the calculator. But are you hitting second trace? Cause you gotta get to calculate, it's not trace, it's calculate. Calculate is right above trace. Let me hop over here, and like this.
Yeah, I wasn't hitting second
Yeah, yeah.
I was just in trace.
Yeah, that's why. And then we hit calculate, you'll see zero, and then just follow the instructions, it's asking for a left bound, a right bound, and then a yes, and that'll get you there. This is a good time, guys, if you, if you have other questions, like, let's get them out, this is a good time.
It's also one point six.
One point six, okay.
I think if you can go to like question nine.
It looks like this, F of X and then F of F of two?
Yes, it's one of those, and then it's also where uh you got F of X and G of X, like, um, in the pink boxes.
The pink boxes, okay, uh, with with this one, so this is what we're doing. So if we're doing F of F of two, first we do F of two, alright, so if we plug a two in. That's gonna be what, fourteen minus four is ten? Then we take ten and plug it into F again. So then seven times ten is seventy, minus four, ends up being, I think, sixty-six.
So so I would do seven times two, which is fourteen.
Okay, here, let me, let me do this, so this is number what, this is one six. And let's get rid of this. This is section, oop, are you not working now? One point six, um, this is number, this is number nine. This comes from section one six twenty-five, right? It asks us to do, it says that F of X equals seven X minus four. And then we have F of F of two, right? So let's hop over here and show it here, okay? So again, this F of F of two, what this means is F of F of two. Right, so here, let me highlight this, like this, we're gonna do this guy in blue. So let's do that blue part first, off to the side. So if we focus on F of two, that's just like normal, you know how to do that, right, we just plug in the two. So we're gonna say seven times two minus four. That's what, that's gonna end up being ten, then what we do. We take that answer and we plug it back in, so. The blue, yeah, whatever answer we get, we plug it back in, so it's gonna be like F of, in this case, instead of F of F of two, now it's gonna be F of ten. So then, I mean, we can even do that off to the side, so if we do F of ten. That's gonna be seven times X minus four, but the X in this case is ten. That's gonna be seventy minus four, ends up being sixty-six. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. So you're plugging in, at the, at the original number, you use your new number.
For for this, for this specific example, yeah.
And then basically, okay, I get you, I got you. And now is that the same for, uh. When you have.
You said like, uh, with the pink boxes, let me see. So like there's this one, we saw one earlier, this one, right, number six?
Yes, sir.
Okay, use a diagram to evaluate G of F, then evaluate G of F of two. Okay, yeah, we can actually work it in a similar way, let me just, I'm gonna do it my own way. So, this is gonna be what, number six, this comes from section one six, number thirteen. We're given, um, it asks us to find G of F of X. Then it wants us to find G of F of two. Then it wants us to find G of F of negative three, alright? We have that F of X is X squared minus three. And G of X is four X plus fifteen. So let me hop over to here and show that for the audience at home, okay? So the first thing it asks us to do was find G of F of X, right? Again, what does this mean, this means G of F of X. So what's our F of X, our F of X is X squared minus thirty, so this is really G of. X squared minus three, is this okay so far?
Uh, yes, sir.
Then, when we go to take, plug the red into the function G, we're gonna say four. We're gonna replace each X with a blank parentheses and plug the red thing in, the red thing in this case is X squared minus three. So then, I'm gonna simplify it down, distribute the four. We'll get four X squared minus twelve plus fifteen. We get four X squared plus three, alright, so this is G, this should be G of F of X.
So you distribute the. Okay, I'll see.
So then, the next one says G of F of two. Yeah, no, I'm doing the best I can there. Uh, let's see. Oh, V of F of two, right, so, G of F of two, so now we're gonna take that function that we found and plug in two. Again, um, there's a couple of ways we can go about this, uh, I'm gonna do it this way. This means G of F of two. Alright, the second function inside the first one. So off to the side, now we could either use the answer that we just found, or I'm gonna do it a little bit different. So, off to the side, I'm gonna go ahead and do F of two. F of two in this case ends up being two squared minus three, is gonna be a one. So then, we're gonna do G of one.
Wait, hold on. You said F of two is two squared minus three.
Is, um. Is this okay, the G of F of two, is that okay? The blue circle?
Yes, yes, I, okay, I get, I get that.
Is this okay, the next blue circle? Okay, so then, from here, I just did, I did the red part off to the side by itself.
Okay, so you just do the by, uh, off to the side.
So then when we do F of two, the answer was one.
Alright, maybe I'm getting confused, cause my, cause my number was three, so I was, I was looking like.
It's gonna change, you gotta get the, get the concept or the idea.
Okay, okay. Alright. Tell me where you got two squared minus three though.
Uh, what's F of X?
F of X is, um. Uh, X squared minus three. Oh, so you just put two, you just put two in there? Oh, okay. Okay, so, so you just put two in place of X? Oh, okay, okay, I get you.
So then. So when we replace X with two, we got an answer of one.
But it's a square though, you got a square. And there's still, uh, it's only one.
So then we take that answer and we plug it back in.
So the answer is one.
No, we're not done, that's just F of two. Alright, we found, we found this one, the answer was one, so then we we plugged it, we plugged in one, F of two is equal to one in this case. So we switched them out, so then, if we have G of one. Let me just do it down here, G of one. Uh, what's G of X, G of X is four X plus fifteen. So we're gonna do four X plus fifteen, but the X in this case is one. But then the answer ends up being nineteen.
Okay, so, so you, you inserted, uh, so you took. Took G of X, which was, uh, four.
It's here, it's here at the top.
It's at the top, yeah, which is four, okay, then you just inserted what we found from two, F of two. And then you got nineteen, alright, I got you.
You wanna try G of F of negative three?
I got like. Thirty six.
Okay, let's see. Okay, so this one. We got four X squared plus three, four X squared plus three. Then, we got nineteen, you said thirty-six?
Uh, yes, sir.
Tell me what you did.
Um, so I did four. Parentheses, negative three, cause we put in a negative three, right?
Okay, we do plug in negative three, but which one does it go into first?
I would imagine the F of X version, right?
That sounds, yeah, what you're saying is correct, but you actually plugged it into G. Alright, it does, it it does go into F first, but it it sounds like you plugged it into G first.
If I plug it in to. F of X, I get negative twelve.
Let me see, uh, nine minus three. Hmm, how did you, that doesn't sound right. Six, okay, six sounds better.
So when you, we, um, raise it to a power, it's a positive, right? I don't know, I, I, uh, when I was looking it up and trying to find out how to do it.
Okay, another way, another way we could do it, instead of, okay, so what we're doing, we took this and plugged it into F. So when X was negative three, we just plugged it in right here, right, we get an answer. And then whatever answer we get, we were plugging in here, we get a second answer. Instead of doing it that way, because we have this guy here at the top, you can actually just take that negative three and plug it in here. Alright, so if we, if we plug it in here, in the first, in the first line. Negative three times negative three is a positive nine, nine times four is thirty-six. Thirty-six plus three is thirty-nine, I think thirty-nine is correct. So it sounds like you may have just forgot to add the three right here, to get thirty-nine.
Okay, so you're saying put negative three in the X spot?
So you had to, you had to square it first, so then you get nine. Nine times four is thirty-six, thirty-six plus three is thirty-nine. I think thirty-nine is good, cause I, what I did the other way, I got thirty. I think you were there, I think that's the one that you were using, um, but then you just needed to add three more, I think you forgot about the plus three. Cause you did initially say four, you said you squared it, or you said four. So you were close, um.
Okay, 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 so, so hold on, hold on. So you did, so you squared it first, you said negative three squared, that's nine. And you, you did four times nine, which is thirty-six. Plus three. Okay, now, for, for, for my equation, the number I get is lower than, than the second number. Like the second, the, um. In the positive.
So it's not, it's less, this is less about the numbers and more about picking up the idea. Because the numbers are gonna keep changing, but there is something that's consistent with all of these examples, right? Like even though the numbers change, there's, we're doing the same thing over and over, with with tweaks, you know what I mean? So it's like, you know. The main thing is like you wanna pick up on the concept and then you have to catch the flow for the changes. But again, the, the, the level of being comfortable with it, the confidence comes from repetition, right? It just takes a whole bunch of reps. That's, that's the long and short of it, um. And you just have to kinda keep doing, I have some students like, when they would get the question correct, instead of hitting next question. At the bottom here, they would do similar question, and they would do every question at least three times. Because again, it's about, cause when you hit similar question, it is the exact same question with different numbers, and that's how you'll experience it.